The facilities in operation subcommittee meeting for Thursday, April 9th, 2020. Before we get started, pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation on the god, with its little little nation of us all.
Thank you very much. All right. First item up on the agenda today is the discussion and vote to refer district technology reorganization. Who do we have the pleasure of?
Roll call, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry. I apologize. Roll call, please.
Mr. Costa?
Yeah.
Mr. Hart?
Mr. Hart dropped off. He was on here, wrong button.
Yep, he'll be right back.
Mr. Hetzel?
Here. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, all right. Should we wait for Mr. Hart? Let's give Mr. Hart a second, see if he comes back.
Yeah, when he stood up. I think he pulled. He might have disconnected. So what I'll do is I'll just stop briefly, you know, I'll give a quick, real quick, on the reorg and then Brian will jump in with a couple of the highlights.
Okay. All right. And here is Mr. Hart. Hey, Paul, nice to have you back.
Sorry about that.
No apology needed. Thank you for coming back. All right, so Mr. Pacheco is going to talk about the district technology reorganization.
So basically, just looking, looking at what we sent you, you can see that we made a few changes, both by the org chart and in the document itself, as to the way we're doing business, how we're going to do business moving forward. Some of it is due to just a little bit of job designations and obviously with the Verizon grant, we're also adding in quite a bit of personnel. So with that being said, we can turn it over to Brian. Scott is also here to address different areas and we can give you a quick, a quick look at the major changes in the, in the document.
Thank you. The main group of changes is does have to relate to the Verizon grant, which will start this summer and going into next school year, in which we have to further grant add in four teachers, of which the job description we've, we currently use for our own teachers that are instructional technology facilitators, we've modified the duties to sort of align more with what the Verizon grant does, so that we can use one job description for these positions as well as other ones that open up down the road. And those four positions are in the budget for FY21 that was submitted by Dr. Malone last month, and they'll be assigned to each of the four schools involved, I'm sorry, five schools involved, with Dorn and Lord splitting one due to their middle school size. And those are partially funded through Verizon, the Verizon grant itself, where I believe twenty eight, uh, thirty eight thousand dollars per teacher is funded by Verizon and we have the balance on our budget. So that'll take care of the professional development part of the Verizon grant that they require of us. And on the fix-it and the support side of the Verizon grant, we're adding in four more, we're calling them junior tech support technicians, of which there was a job description there that we're asking you to modify the description as well as the title to add those four positions in. We currently have those positions, I believe it's two of them right, three right now, two are filled, one is unfilled, of which we add the four for next year and they'll be placed again in the, in the three middle schools and Dorn and Lord splitting one between them. And that will take care of the fix-it side of things for management of the chrome books, handing them out, warranty work and this general fix of, of those schools as well as neighboring schools. Since we're paying for that full freight out of our own budget and Verizon doesn't pay for any of that, this part of the grant that we have to have these positions, someone that's at Talbot will probably help out with Watson and Fonseca, someone that's at CUS, we're helping out at Riveras and so on. So those are four additional positions that we're budgeting in, with the job description title and duties we actually changed. And the only other change for the budgeting and job description is that we currently had tech support technician, which is an existing job, we have two people in those positions already, of which we're actually changing the title to be senior tech support technician since it's a higher level position than the junior ones and the current ones we have. And to sort of differentiate them between their duties as well as their salary range is, is different. So that way there's sort of a progression between a junior tech that if something opens up down the road, there's a salary and extra job description, extra duties going with the job description if they choose to apply for any of those open senior positions. And part of this reorg as well is that because we just recently approved in the network, director of network infrastructure and telecom at the last meeting, the network one inch of that we currently have, we're not going to fund that in the next budget because we'll use that funding towards the new position as well as based on the number of tickets we're receiving and change we're proposing for next year in tech support in general, we will no longer need the unfilled tech support position and we can use that funding towards other positions that we're looking to add. So although we're adding in eight positions for a teacher, for a non-teacher in support, we're also removing two positions. So that's probably a little much in terms of value. If you have any questions on that part, I can pause and...
Gentlemen, any questions?
No more questions, no. That's fine, please speed forward.
Right, I have one question. I noticed we already, we currently have a district instructional technology facilitator in the middle school. So moving forward, we're going to have one at each middle school as part of this Verizon grant. So is it, and just, you know, throwing it out there, is it worth having that individual work either at the elementary or the high school level?
Frank Faris oversees them. He has, we, we, I understand the question, we understand, that is sort of, it looks like it's a redundancy in some, in some way, but there are other things that happen at the middle school level that she'll sort of oversee and she'll actually be working with those four people almost as a point person.
Right.
And it can also help out at like, at the K8 schools, which he also services besides middle school, she can help out at the other grade levels more. So down the road, as funding comes available, we'll look to add another person at the high school level, another person at the elementary level to support those three existing teachers that we have. It's not needed at the middle school because we're adding these four Verizon FTEs, but the high school and elementary hope to address in future budgets.
Excellent. Any questions, gentlemen?
No questions, you refer.
All right.
Secuted.
Motion, we have the motion been made to refer this to the full committee and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes. All right. Next item on the agenda, we have discussion and vote to refer the transportation budget fiscal year 21.
So the, I think there's, there might be a little misunderstanding as to what I'm going to report. Basically, I'm reporting on the bid documents. So the documents that are out to bid now, the bid opening is in a couple of weeks for the five-year continuum contract for all other items, Yellow Bus and McKenney Vento. We currently have the five-year contract that was approved by the school committee and also by the city council for a five-year contract with Trembley Bus, and we're waiting for those documents to, to find its way through the city hall, through city hall and get signatures. So that piece is, is behind us. We're working with the, with the current bid document and answering, we're on addendum number three with a couple of last minute questions and ready to move forward for a bid opening, as I said, in a couple of weeks. So that will be ready to, we won't be ready before your, before the meeting on Monday because the docked bids will not, will not be open. So we're using the current number that you see in the budget as a placeholder, as we did last year, and then as soon as we have the final numbers, then they will work their way into the, into the budget. And that's what I have.
Excellent. Any questions?
No questions, no more questions from me, no.
All right. Is there a motion, Mr. Vice Chair?
No further, I'll second that.
I have the motion and a second. I just have one quick question before we go to roll call. So how, how's the bids been? People ask a lot of questions, Ken, I mean...
It's not as many questions as we've had in the past, nowhere near the amount of questions we've had in the past. We have had a couple of requests to only go with a one-year contract. I am not ready to, to ask the school committee if that's an option, but I'd like to do is see what the bids look like and if we're unhappy with the bids or if we do not have enough qualified bidders or if there are any openings in any one of the categories that we put out to bid, then we will obviously approach the committee and see if we can make any adjustments. But as of right now, I'd like to see the process through. I really don't think it's advantageous for us to negotiate one-year contracts because we seem to lose some of our negotiating power. As we've seen with the five-year contract, we picked up three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, or three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, I'm sorry, and I think that there will be opportunity with the rest of this contract to, to have more savings. The one-year contract doesn't allow for us to do that. So in the best interest of the district and also from the city's perspective, I think we should stay the course and see what happens.
Excellent. Any additional questions, gentlemen?
No.
All right. None being heard, roll call.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes. Thank you. Next item, we get an update on the Sylvia School traffic issue.
Sure. So we have a small amount of funds that are available outside of anything from the school department that is sitting in a prior building project, it wasn't the Sylvia, it's Morton. And what I would like the committee to think about is asking, asking the mayor, obviously, and the city council to reallocate those funds for us to do the traffic work and the committee process at the Sylvia School. We also, at the request of the committee to come up with some funding for the eight hundred and sixty or eight hundred and seventy thousand that the city just sent over on the employee, the employer trust piece of the insurance proceeds, I think if, it's also in there. So between the two items, we have more than enough funds to take us past phase one and possibly into design work on phase two. But what I'd like to do is, is again, use this funds that are already borrowed, that can't be used for anything else right now, we could ask the city council to reallocate along with the mayor, those funds for Sylvia improvements, and then we'll move forward with the committee process, which will take us about nine months to do anyway. In the meantime, the traffic study will help us with any immediate changes we could possibly make without any kind of construction work.
Okay. Any questions?
No, is that something that needs formal action from the committee to the mayor's office, so you can send the appropriation down to the, the transfer down to the council?
I think that we could do it with, I think we could do it with a, a letter, just a letter, from, from the committee or possibly just from the superintendent. It is already allocated funds for school department and it wouldn't hurt that if we had it as a formal motion at the committee, I'm just not sure with the agenda set, if we have time to do that now. Procedurally, I'm not quite sure.
How much is in the org account?
I can get that information and I'll, I'll send that to everyone. It's, I want to say it's about seventy-five thousand.
Okay. And so that will be put towards the permitting for the...
Environmental?
Yeah, my estimates are between a hundred and a hundred and twenty thousand for the permitting, the initial permitting and design, which is schematic design, not full design. The permitting process is quite lengthy and it's a, it's reclamation of property on which we will cross over with either bridge structures or infill with, with different methods of getting water to, to pass through what we're trying to build. So I'm not quite sure if it's box culverts or something else, but anyway, it'll allow us to do that initial design, not construction work design, but initial design and move the, that particular piece forward.
Okay. No further questions, are you? Yeah, Kenny, if I could correct you, I'm probably going to be redundant, but you're going to take the funds from Morton to Sylvia, as Vice Chair Costa said.
For the permitting process?
What we're, what we're going to ask the city council and the mayor to do is to just do that, to take the money directly.
And then what's left in the Morton account? Zero?
It's, it would be leaving zero in that construction account for Morton, yes.
And it is, it's one okay as far as...
Yeah, this was, yeah, this is residual funds. We've used it two or three times. There was about three hundred thousand in there at one point. We repaired the wall, which was in back of the basketball hoops in the courtyard at Morton. We did some other work on, on the property, some enhancement on the property after the construction was finished. So normally at all of these construction projects, there's a small amount of money left and it stays with that project until the city designates it otherwise. So now it's sitting there in that particular project. I think we may have a small amount in Fonseca, which we were looking to do some name of barrier issues that we're having in one of the kindergarten classrooms. So both of those school accounts are still active. I want to call them inactive, but they are still appropriate funds.
I understand, okay. All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one other question. So with the work going on in a gas station on the corner there, President Avenue in North Main, there's nothing that we're going to need to do. I know obviously we didn't foresee that property being developed anytime soon, it's been sitting vacant for a bit, but now that they're doing work, turning that into a gas station slash convenience store, liquor store, whatever it's going to be, is there anything we're going to need to do on our property to give us any kind of separation from that? That would be, that would be my only concern. I mean, I think the project's done, there's money still left in the account, it can be used for school purposes without a doubt. I just don't want to move that money to Sylvia Transportation and find out later that based on that construction, we have needs that need to be done fencing, whatever, on our property to keep us sort of private, separate from the business that's going in there.
So if I could, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
The, to the back of the building, so the west side of our property, I'm sorry, east side of our property, west side of the gas station, proposed gas station, convenience store, we have a wall, retaining wall that belongs to us. We also have a catch, a culvert, so to speak, that was made to direct water into catch basins to protect the gas station property from our runoff. We also have a fence that was put up, our fence that was put up between the gas station, the original gas station and our property on the north side of the gas station property, south side of our property. So we're enclosed currently, there was some damage done by the contractor when they were demolishing the, the old gas station that they're responsible for and we've already had the conversation with them and they're, they're taking full responsibility to repair a small section of the, the brick facade work that was done on retaining wall near our generator. So we are enclosed from the property and we have abovites there and other things that are going to be able to screen us from that particular property. So I think we're in good shape in that, Mayor.
All right. So do you see as part of that project helping that we're going to need to sort of keep us separate from what's going on over there?
In my best, in my best guess, there's nothing there. Right, at this time, there's nothing that we need to take care of.
All right. So would you like a motion for us to refer this?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I would ask is that if we would, and I don't know, again, because it's not written that way on the agenda, what I'd like to know is if we could ask the city to use the remaining funds in the Sylvia, in the Morton School building account and move that to Sylvia.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Mr. Costa, you cut out.
Isn't it ethical? Just same thing happened last meeting. Can Mr. Hart hear us?
We cannot hear you right this second, Mr. Costa.
Just a point of information, I'm not so sure that it's necessary...
Okay.
Okay, so... Because it's designated as a school building account already?
Okay.
So I'm not sure if it's necessary for, for a referral?
It's probably going to take a second.
There's no soundbar.
He's going to be delayed.
You got me now?
He's on delay.
Right, it's on a delay, so it's going to come through right now.
So procedurally, if we refer it, then it's got to be on a, another agenda in order to get the action to take place. So I think the superintendent letter through Kenny, to Mr. Pacheco, to the mayor, maybe sufficient. I'm not so sure it needs a vote.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Superintendent, is that something you can do for us?
Easy.
Excellent, we'd appreciate it.
Do with money, so this doesn't have to, this doesn't, is there anything on the agenda about this on Monday? No. Okay, so we'll write the letter Monday and then we'll get that done.
Okay, excellent. Anything?
Is it too late to put it on the agenda?
Yeah.
Probably, right?
Yes.
Okay. As long as it doesn't need to end on the agenda like Vice Chair.
I think Mark gave us a path.
Yes.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Mark's going to come through in one second with some dialogue.
He's going to ask his kids to be on the internet while he's doing this. He's got two kids on his...
No.
Okay, no further questions?
No.
Excellent. All right. Next item on the agenda, we have discussion and vote to refer Durfee Solar.
I'm not so sure, guys, procedurally, the funds are designated for a school building project. We're just asking for a trade, so I don't know if it needs...
Yeah, you're right, Mark.
All right, okay. I think we're ready to proceed.
I'm just trying to fix his sound because he's definitely, he's actually muted himself.
He muted himself, he's probably telling, maybe his kids playing, people watching Netflix and...
The solar company has not replied to the email. He did late earlier this afternoon, but he hasn't replied since the sun's come out.
We supposed to have somebody here from the solar company?
He was just going to answer any questions, if anyone had any questions on it, that's all. It was not a, this is, the proposal has changed a little bit and I can, I can go briefly over the changes.
Yeah, we're going to, let us know. Talk to us about the Durfee Solar project, please.
He's still on mute, does he know that?
I think...
Well, good. Well, he can hear us.
Mark, you can hear us, right? All right. And we have you muted right now, you muted yourself. Okay, just want to make sure.
So the project, this is a project that came up late in the year, late in November, I think, was before the full committee. It then was referred to subcommittee and we had asked the representative from Select to have a conversation with us. He did show up at full committee and...
I did, and we're a little bit ahead.
Is he there? Is that him?
He's in a significant delay.
He's in very large delay. Okay. So what we, we had asked Matt Short sleeve, who is the representative from Select, to show up at the meeting. He did have a conversation, we had a debate in the open session, full committee, and then it was referred back to, to subcommittee so we could iron out a few things. In the meantime, the program has changed just a bit. The, the price, the PPA price has dropped from where it was. It was a little over eleven cents and it dropped to a little over ten cents. So we've, we've gained a penny in this time that it's been down. We, we are in the same situation as far as installation. The construction project at Durfee is prepared to accept this solar array for September, October, when it's scheduled to go in. They are, they haven't done that roof yet on the main part of the field house. However, they have assured us that it would be ready for the, for this particular time. So what I would like to do is continue going the route of the PPA, which would mean that we have no cost involved in, in the installation of this solar array, that the city will receive pilot payments per year. And in this, it shows the payment that the city will receive, broken down, all the way down from year one to year 20, that payment is in lieu of taxes and the city will receive those payments, which is outside of the agreement that the school committee will have with select solar for our electricity needs. So basically, we'll be buying all of the electricity that the solar field produces plus other solar electricity to fill our portfolio. So all of our electricity will be covered under this agreement at that particular reduced rate.
Okay, any questions?
I don't...
I, I believe Mr. Costa said motion to refer.
I'll second it, I understand.
Seconded by Mr. Hart. Quickly, I just have a couple of questions. So, and it's been a while since we talked about this in full committee. So we're going to refer to the full committee as the representative will probably be there.
I'll second the refer.
Right, he'll be there?
He will be there.
Okay, so we can ask questions at that time?
Absolutely.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Costa?
You get the thumbs up, yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes. All right. Give Mark a second. His audio will come through momentarily. Is there any new business?
I just have one question.
All right, Mr. Hart?
Mr. Superintendent, I'm looking at your, as far as the Durfee High School, the new construction, how are we doing with the tradespeople, the carpenters, electricians? I heard that they're going, they're not working or, can you give a quick summary about the status of that?
Sure, and Ken can give the specifics, but the carpenters' union is not working right now and the Glazers' union, which does glass and some other kind of stuff like that, is not working right now. We don't need either one of them for major things on the project until the second week of May, based on the schedule. So right now, we're able to proceed as, as planned with the roofing, electrical, the masonry, all those things, but the windows are the, the next phase to go in and that will be held up if the, if the carpenters don't come back. So...
Okay, so, but we're pretty much, I know we're way ahead of schedule on it and it's, you guys have been doing a good job with it with everything and the Suffolk's done a great job, but this, we didn't have any issues coming, coming forward, right? I mean, as far as, I mean, I know it's probably up in the air, but I just wanted to get a status of that.
And again, Ken, Ken, Ken is the, he's got the finger on the pulse every day, but we, Ken, in a weekly phone call with, you know, with George Mosibout, which is the construction management team, and that's weekly, the conversations that we've had with the construction managers has been, they're going to proceed is, is, is the scope of the work plan until such time as either the governor steps in and shuts down all construction or all the reunions at that time say, we're out. Now, granted, I don't know if everyone knows this, but the, the masons and the electricians are non-union right now. So I'm not worried about them at all.
Yeah.
Suffolk's done, I think, an amazing job of doing the best practices for safe construction, social distancing, the temperature check, every single employee, you can't get on the site if you have a fever. The site's been... The site's been locked down. They're doing everything right. It's a safe place to work and we're just going to keep going as planned. I don't have, I don't have any worries that I need to tell the committee about at this time. That's, that's the issue, the blessing.
Thank you.
I don't have any...
So I wanted to, I just wanted a quick summary of, of, you know, of what's going on. So I've heard things go back and forth, but I'm, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with everything. I, I just don't want to see any, you know, we're way ahead of, we're way ahead of project, it seems to me. So I want to help, make, make, keep everything going.
Way ahead is probably, I mean, we're on a good schedule, we don't have major concerns. But there'll definitely be some things that come up, but we're, we're going to be able to manage those things because, I mean, we, you know, we can employ overtime, weekend, all that kind of stuff that, that the owner, project managers would work with us on if need be, but we're not, we're not there yet. The only heads up I give to this, to this party is just to keep your eyes open and your ears open for things such as, you know, we're, we're doing the fitness center room over. There's a hundred thousand dollars of FNE to do it right. But let's say for everything we really want's a hundred and ten, oh, we're going to need, you know, where do we have those kind of conversations? So that's all that I'm concerned about right now is making sure that, that we're, we have, we keep in communication about other things that aren't part of the scope, but we may want to do so we can have those conversations as they come up with, with the subcommittee here.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other new business? Mr. Costa? Mr. Hart? No, hearing, hearing motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn was made, seconded by Mr. Costa. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Mr. Costa? Mr. Hart?
Yeah, seconded.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes. All right, meeting has been adjourned. Thank you very much.